Even there it's insanity, I'm logging everything. Because something's going to be done about it, because there's a safety. We had a, a, a boy get killed, my son Draymond get killed. Because they were parked on Derby like that. And ever since, it hasn't never been anything like that since this new administration got in. Cause it was, my sister, they had a Mary Ann. They took care of her, she had a truck, and they took care of it. So I don't know what the problem is here, why they can't do something about that. If you go past there, I want you to go past there and see it.
Where is it?
It's on Hopewell, if not, it's on Hopewell, and then it goes into Tucson. And something's going to be done about that.
Where is it, where, where is it?
It's on the right hand side.
Where is it creating the safety? What is the safety?
It's got a long from here to make it over there past that wall. And then sometime it has vans, a big truck or thing going.
But what is it, wh- what is the safety risk associated with it?
Because on this side you can hardly get past them when you come in.
So cutting off of?
No, that clearance.
Cutting off of where?
Yeah, clear, that's right. If you cut, if you, if I could leave my house and turn around, now you can hardly get past there. And the tail is so long, somebody's gonna run into it, doesn't have lights on it, but the tail is so long, the back end of it, I don't know.
So is it a nighttime issue?
Uh-huh, exactly.
Wh- where, okay, so where it's parked? What roadway is it obstructing? Where are you having problems getting by it at?
On Hopewell.
On Hopewell?
On Hopewell.
Or just Hopewell in general?
When you turn in, when we turn off the Tucson, you go to Hopewell, you have a problem. When you come off the Derby, coming down Hopewell, you have a problem.
And is that with other vehicles parked there, or just?
No, just, most vehicles are parked there. Now, usually they park in the driveway, or even somewhere. A parking lot may be on the side. But it's so, and it's a hill, it's a hill. So when you come off the Derby, you come down on the right hand side. It's, the tail, it is so long, and they, somebody must have told them, some, cause they put a, 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 you know how they, when they doing street work, they put a cone out there. Now you do it, they just go past there and look at it. I'm surprised you haven't looked at it.
Well, I had, I had some pictures sent to me of it, and I had a traffic officer go out and look at it.
You ought to go look at it. And we have never, I have never had this problem until now. But they took care of it before, so I don't know what the problem is now.
Before we had a quasi ordinance that we were going by, but we can't, we can't use that ordinance right now, because it's on hold.
What you mean on hold?
It's on hold, it requires deputies to establish wait in order to force the parking.
And then sometime we tell you, had those big vans on.
The trailers?
Yeah, big vans parked, and it's been there since Sunday, I'm logging everything. Because something's going to be done about it. Cause somebody's gonna be hurt, and then who's gonna be responsible? Who's gonna be responsible?
Well, we'll have to, we'll, I'll take a look at it myself, and then I'll report back if you want to leave me your contact.
And there's trouble like that about it, something's gonna be, I'm getting my, about, all my neighbors together, because we shouldn't have to pay taxes for something like this.
You want to leave me your contact before you go, and then maybe I can give you a call?
And you can come by my house. And we can sit and have coffee in our house.
We're really friends, aren't we?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for me?
I, I, I saw, let some of the other people talk.
Go ahead, go ahead, please.
I'm a member of Mount Carmel Baptist Church on Day Liberty. And I was told that there's a truck that comes in the back. And they think that there's selling drugs, or picking up drugs. So could you keep a check on that?
Do you know about what time of day?
Uh, usually, he said on Saturday morning, sometime on Saturday.
Do we know what kind, or color, or anything?
I didn't ask him. But it's the, my head trust, head trustee, uh, he should be able to tell you.
Are we talking Saturday morning as in overnight hours, morning hours, or like daylight morning hours?
Daylight.
Yep.
He said it's the same truck, twice as he's seen.
Like a pickup truck?
Yeah.
We'll take a look at it.
They don't know, well, on that part, the, the US Marshal, uh, uh, they can't, they were on my street, there was about fifteen of them. And somebody was banging on my door and scared me to death, and I opened it, and then he said, "The US Marshal." I said, "What are you banging on my door like that for?" And so he said, "There are some people across the street, that you're looking for this person across the street." I said, "I didn't know anything about it." But, I mean, can they just come and bang on your door like that?
Yeah, well, I mean, did.
Yeah, they gonna break my door.
You gotta go and shoot him. Shoot.
I know, but I, I hope you don't hit me, and I do it like that.
Hello, this is a federal.
Yes, yes, it was about fifteen of them. And then I saw him again on the, what's going on out here on Derby? Police and, and marshals and everybody.
So the, the marshals and the FBI, a lot of them are involved in a Safe Streets Task Force, and they, they're like a regional squad that go around looking for violent offenders. So they may have gotten information that somebody they were with was lying.
Well, I know they were looking for, you know, uh, they have. Well, I was gonna call me, uh, Graham, you know him?
He's gone though.
Yeah, we need him back.
He's down in. How am I gonna have coffee with you?
Yeah, I have a hard road to go.
Um, one thing we did do that I forgot to mention, uh, we did serve a search warrant in the township two Fridays ago. It was in conjunction with one of the houses that we had received a community concern on. Uh, the actual purpose for the search warrant was that the, uh, an occupant of that residence had been linked to a robbery in the county. So, you may have saw it on TV or whatever, but, uh, we did recover some evidence related to both sides of that, uh, that argument, the community complaints and the, and the robbery.
Is that the one on Union Road?
We had Union Road closed, but it was actually on Dayton Liberty. And there was a.
Separate one.
Miami Township on Union.
So, I gotta thank Sheriff's Office, in six days, they had answers. Well, my house was one of those that was listed as burglary, and in six days, they started having answers.
Felt forth with Miami Township detectives, and they went out and were able to coordinate that together. Miami Township pled the weapon.
Yes, I'm, uh, thank you for letting me, uh, clear it. But my concern is, uh, it's thirty-four seventy Dayton River Road, and I think we had a squatter there. Uh, I came, uh, earlier last year, reported, and, uh, it was like two sheriff officers with there, and it was just like, really? You can't really do nothing, because at the time when the guy came out, he said he bought the house. And I did like a little, uh, back work on the, on the house and the person that he said that, you know, bought it, uh, passed away. And, uh, I've been seeing him go in and out, so I wanted to like know, is any way possible that I can like check on it, or anything like that?
We've had quite a few complaints across the township of squatters setting up shop here and there. We've had a couple that have left, kind of quasi voluntarily. The problem with the squatters is it's a, it's a difficult one to, to combat, because unless we can find a complaint, and somebody can tell us, you know, no, they shouldn't be there. You know, when, when the owner's passed away, that's typically an avenue where somebody will set up shop in the house, they don't have a next, and can't handle and things. Now they're in there, nobody's checking on things, they're living there, we've got nobody calling that, that has any type of ownership over the real estate.
Correct.
That can say, "This shouldn't be happening." So, all of that requires a cumbersome amount of, uh, research, paperwork, um, which, which we will look into. But, there's even like laws on the books that allow squatters to take. So if, if, if they're in a property so long.
Right.
They can claim ownership.
Squatter.
So it, uh, it, it's, it's tedious to get them out. So if you can get them to leave voluntarily, you know, so be it, but.
Yeah, cause what happened was, only, uh, there, what happened, they went like to a nursing home. And I think they had like a lien on the house, and the people had, even lien on the house. I guess, you know, the older first that went to the, you know, this first home, I guess they like, I guess they just walked away. And the people had the lien on the house, they didn't do nothing, something like that, and I looked up one day, and I saw somebody going in and out of the house, and like I said, I reported it. And the next door neighbor, they called it, and the guy said he went and purchased the house off, uh, with sheriff's sale. And, uh, I think I did a little back work on it, and, uh, the house neighbor did come in the sheriff's sale, so I'm just like, so basically, cause he's been in there about, I'm gonna put, maybe about sixty days now. So I'm just like.
We just, one we just dealt with last week, has actually not had a mortgage payment made on it in fifteen years, and the bank just hasn't done anything with it. So I don't know how that falls through the crack, the DPL was still on, they hadn't done anything with it.
Is that the same address?
No, it's not the same address. Uh, it's just sometimes the stuff falls through the cracks, and even when, even when you have like legal recourse, or somebody willing to sort of troll over it. The bank just didn't do anything with it, it just sat there. So, I mean, if I could go fifteen years ago, I'd make a mortgage payment. But, uh, so yeah, we'll take a look at that, we'll see what we come up with. Um, you said you checked that address for sheriff's sale?
Yeah, and, uh, didn't really come up as one, because I guess the people has a lien on it. Because you can just see this on Dayton River Road thirty-four, it's like when you, first, it's like one, it's like that big white tall house, it's almost catered corner from the school. And, um, and it's just like, uh, one day I saw some lights on, I'm just like, I thought like DPL had come up and hooked some up, and the one neighbor looked, and he was like, across from him, said, "DPL," so. I don't know if he went outside, and he did the old Bigamaro, you know, so.
Light it back up?
Yeah, light it back up, or what, so like I said before, and, um, and my, like I said, my concern is, I, I live with my father, he's older. And I try to talk to him like, "Dad, you know, you," cause, you know, he kind of like sometimes need to do a lot, and, and I don't know that guy, and squat, and like, stuff like that. And I'm like, kind of concerned, because I'm thinking that's like, you know, how can you just come in and, you know?
Crazy.
Yeah, cause I, cause thinking about it, I could have did that, you know, but I'm not that type of person, but I'm just like, you know.
Unfortunately, one of the things we learned also through this process, or I have. DPL doesn't pay attention to who owns the property. So if you're, you rent a property, you walk in and rent it, you gotta go get the electric in your name.
Right.
They don't have any way of checking to see who owns the property. So they probably have a bill going for who's living there. He probably hooked it up, or I mean, called DPL and ordered a service on a house he doesn't own. And DPL told us that. So unfortunately, that, he may not have gone back here, like you said, hooked it up himself, it probably was a legitimate service.
Okay.
As long as he keeps paying the bill, nobody knows that he's a squatter.
He could sign, you had to check it out.
It's tough, yeah, and that's, you know, we use their detectives a lot to be able to help us.
Right, cause like I said, it, it was two coming out there, and you know, he gave some kind of story, and it just like, you know, you know, basically, you know, it has some kind of tie, and I'm just like, I don't know, because. Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
The trustees too, which you didn't know since last year, they're making a move to lower the years that a house could sit in foreclosure, or lack of taxes being paid. As you said, fifteen years and arrears on taxes, how did that happen?
Right.
So we've gone to the treasurer's office and said, "How does that happen?" And they said, "The community can consciously make a decision on when a property immediately goes to a sheriff's sale."
Right.
So there was no limit on Jefferson properties. They're talking about between three and five years. Now, if somebody makes a dollar payment a year on a payment plan, that, that keeps them out of trouble, but they're trying to pay the bill off. This would be only those vacant properties, the fifteen year properties, we got one that's twenty-three years unpaid, sitting out here. That's, that's crazy, and vagrants have been in and out of that house. This may help us curb some of this, you know, it'll take five years to get there. But some of them are already, because it's not retroactive, I mean, it's retroactive, so if you instituted today, anything over five years automatically goes to the market. Which may help us solve a lot of these issues, we don't know.
Cause we, like I said, the reason why I'm, I'm here today, you know, I'm, I'm, cause you said, come to the trustee, we maybe, cause, cause one house before the White House, y'all was nice enough to board that house up, because the people from, uh, I guess, uh, what's the school on top there on the township? No, not, you know, not, uh, on, uh, on the, uh, VA like, what little kids go through?
Right, it's that, it's that job release.
Yeah, they was going that one house.
Yeah, sure.
And partying, they, you know, y'all were smart enough to board that house up. Not just that, you turned them from going in that house, but like I said, that one, the tall house, like I said, right across from the school. And, uh, like I said, I've seen him tiptoeing in there, cause he was, he was backing in there, so I don't know if his car broke down or what, and like I said, I've been seeing some lights on, and stuff like that, that's why.
These squatter rights are, are very, very hard, because they have the rights of you that own the, own your own property. They have the exact protection. And if they pay that one dollar to whoever, they get to stay. And the clock starts all over again. And the squatters know what they're doing. If they're gonna stay here, they, they, they're gonna stay, and you're not gonna root them out, no matter what you spend. The problem with the township is, they don't have the resources in the general fund to go challenge these people. Takes court, money, and, and, and so it's very difficult when you have not just one, it's projected to have about forty to fifty of these squatters out there. And, and each case might take up to ten thousand dollars to get one squatter out. We don't have that kind of money, so it, we gotta work with you, the sheriff, do what you can to investigate, and do our best job we can to try to root, so we'll look at that house.
Unfortunately, the problem's all over the county, so we're not just.
Yeah, it's not just Jefferson, it's all over the county.
We're, we're in several locations.
I have a cousin that, uh, lives on, uh, Lansdowne, and I was parking my little truck, and I was walking through the neighborhood, like you say, all these abandoned houses, and, you know, I just, I guess, like you say, you said the ten thousand dollars.
To root them out.
Just root them out, but like to knock the house was down.
Average about fifteen thousand minimum, because now the federal government requires asbestos check, groundwater check. And so none of that was there five years ago. Five years ago, you could tear one down about seven, eight thousand, now it's to fifteen. And hope you don't find asbestos, otherwise, now we're looking at twenty twenty-five per home. It, it's a challenge for us everywhere. That's why Dayton has ten thousand empty. We have about two fifty.
You couldn't like, some of the young people around here now, couldn't, uh, y'all get him, uh, some tax work, and he go in fifty houses or something?
If, if the thing goes into tax foreclosure. Otherwise, they gotta pay off the fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars taxes on the home before they have a chance to live it, or, you know, do anything with it. And that's not gonna happen, so that's the challenge we have. And these mortgage companies, is the one you had, I know which one you're talking about, they don't wanna let go of them. Cause they've borrowed money on top of those for some big massive development out west, California, wherever. And so they've got that as part of their collateral. So they don't care what happens here, cause they don't live here, they're in California, or they live. So we have some major, major, bigger problems than anybody really understands. But we just have to work one house at a time.
And like I said before, is, and the only reason why I'm coming here, because like, if you go off to thirty-five, I guess, and go down Dayton Liberty, and, uh, if you've never been in this community, you see that house, cause grass is not kept. You're like, man, what kind of community this, you know, I'm coming into?
Yes.
And that's one reason why, you know, like I said, besides that, and like you said, cause before, the grass was almost up to your knees, and stuff like that, so I'm just like, if you just come in this community, that's the first house you see. You know, you think the whole, the whole community might be like that.
The only other thing I would say, not to delay our conversation, but we're not allowed to enter a property without legal right to enter, or we're trespassing. That's a new law, it's been put in the last three years, so we can't just go in and mow a property, board it up, because it's bad. We have to go through the courts, and it could take sixty to ninety days to get approval to just enter in. If we send our workers in before that, our workers' comp is void. And we're not gonna send any of our men or women into work on a property and say, "Sorry, you're lucky you got hurt, but guess what? Workers' comp isn't there, because you shouldn't be there."
Yeah, I understand.
So, we're not trying to tell you, we, we're not working on, we're working as hard as we can, but there's only so much that we can.
Can do.
Do, and we just ask you to.
Really good at going, it's a slow process?
Yeah, just continue to come and call. You're not a pest, not at all, but the thing is, we want everybody to be educated about what the problem is. And what we're up against, because it's not simple as it was ten years ago.
I was told that like, if he was in there, like, and he did like little approvals on the house, he might be getting out, like, that's not right, but it's laws.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Speaking about the laws, I can't get no respect, Captain. My neighbor pulled a gun on me, and I went house, got me a glass of water, and when I come back out, he changed his mind. Why are you laughing, Mr.?
Come here with a glass of water?
Ah, got cooled off, got me a glass of water, so. So I, you know, I, I do my wife's car, so she can go to church on Sunday, and when I come back, I got seat print on it. I don't have a cat. And I talked to him, and, you know, he, something about people when they deal drugs, they, um, think they, they love their ball. I don't wanna go to war with him, but I can get me a book at Barnes and Nobles on how to have a war with him. But, I'd rather not make you do paper for too much.
You wanna give me?
Oh, I got pictures. You told me to get pictures, and I even got colored pictures.
Next time you call my voicemail?
Oh, no, I'm gonna show you before you leave.
But, next time you call my voicemail, just do me a favor and leave your phone number, cause I got your voicemail.
I left the phone number to you, probably just sitting next.
No, no, I mean, it's like, I, I couldn't believe it was the same guy. It's like, this guy is like, he's nice, he's being nice to you.
I'm a nice guy. But I can't get rough.
We, we just got caller ID in that building, so I, I'm not, I've worked blind for years.
Sure.
But if you can leave your number for me, uh, I'll look at your pictures before we go, and, um, you know, whatever we can do to help you.
When you get ready to leave, I'll probably have to talk to you.
Anything else for me?
Thank you much.
I have one question. On your noise ordinance, could you just explain to us what that is? Does it always have to bark for fifteen minutes before I call you, or? Wasn't that a person coming to call?
How many DBs, noise, how you gonna, how you gonna do this?
Well, I haven't read it yet, I just saw.
It's an existing resolution, was passed years and years ago, and they, we had prosecuting attorney review as it's read, as it's written.
How do you, how do you do it? Do you go by DBs, or so many feet, or what are you gonna do?
Well, it's what's written in the, in that actual resolution.
Yeah, there we go.
No person shall make, continue, or cause to be made, or continued at any unreasonably loud, disturbing, and unnecessary noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, and response, health, peace, or safety to others within the township. As authorized by section five oh five point one seven two O R C. The following acts, among others, are declared to be loud, disturbing, and unnecessary noises in violation of this resolution. Horns, signaling devices, um, radios, phonographs, obviously operating at a annoying level. Loudspeakers, amplifiers for advertising, and these are all broken down with lengthy paragraphs under it, so I'm just giving you the, the headers here. Yelling, shouting, animals, birds, um, stream whistles, exhaust, loading, unloading, opening boxes, construction or repairing of buildings and streets. Hockers, peddlers, drums, pile drivers, hammers, blowers, sound amplification systems, and motor vehicles. And does not apply to any of the following circumstances. Amplifying equipment of the motor vehicle is being operated to request medical or vehicular assistance to warn others, so you can't call it on a blaze or fire. Motor vehicle in emergency, can't police a fire again. It's a state, or political subdivision, or public utility vehicle, motor vehicle participating in parade which causes parade and obtained improper permits. Sound amplified equipment of motor vehicle being operated is a requirement of federal, state law. So obviously, there's going to be, uh, you know, discretion applied in these areas, you know, what, what constitutes unreasonable, you know, prolonged. Does that answer that?
No.
No.
Let me restate my question. Uh, dog barking?
Animals.
Animals, tell me what, I mean, is that, is that considered, is that construed barking at midnight? Is that construed fifteen minutes barking at midnight? I had one of your officers tell me, the reason I'm asking, I had one of your officers tell me that Jefferson Township did not have one. Now we have one, so now tell me what I've gotta have when he comes out to sight.
A person shall make, continue, or cause to be made, or continued any unreasonably loud, disturbing, or unnecessary noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, and response, health, peace, or safety to others within the township. The keeping of any animal or bird which by causing frequent or long continued noise shall disturb the comfort or response of persons in the vicinity.
Do I go outside and say, "My fence and record my neighbor's dog barking at midnight"?
Was it like a outdoor dog that bark all?
What did your officer run when he comes out?
Always best to let him come out while it's happening. So, we got a midnight shift, you run, if you're being disturbed at midnight, call him out. That answer? You know, there, there's individual officer discretion that are coming, gonna come into play, um, you know. Obviously, if you go do this tonight, I haven't had a chance to disseminate this for the Rogues for a while, so.
Well, I mean, well, the reason I asked, let me, if an officer pulls up, like, what if he's got video? I say, "No." Got audio? No, I didn't know how much video and how much audio I needed to make this thing.
Well, just, uh, if you, if you're willing to make it, go ahead and make fifteen or twenty minutes of it, still call him while it's going on. So, um, you know, that should address all their concerns. This man?
I've got a lot to ask, and it goes with, it goes with zoning department, road department, police enforcement, relief, and administration. We have a house that was torn down. At one time, I was told it was supposed to be stayed, cause the person was trying on, trying to pay the taxes to keep it. Next thing I know, that thing comes out, I guess they take out their plumbing, or whatever. Next thing I know, there's a line or a stick there, they removed it, next thing I see, they tear it down. Plus, that goes along with, uh, noise, because most of the time when they were doing it, most people that are over, might not be up yet.
It was specter, the utility?
The ventran, and the people who took it down, them too.
Yeah, that's gonna fall under the utility clause. So, um, you know, obviously, we, we have to act within reason, what is reasonable, what's not reasonable, if they're out there doing it at midnight.
Morning, early, too early.
Before dawn?
Huh?
Before dawn?
Just like six, seven, eight. Yeah, but for me, I might, I might have a headache bad. When a neighbor who comes home. We also have another house that they say they're gonna turn, tear down, and they don't, it's still up. They try, they call themselves boarding it up, and all that. And then people are still breaking in. Now, the house that I'm talking about, I thought it was, I was told it was gonna stay, but the one we need torn down, it keeps on, nobody tears it down. And I don't get it.
Okay, well, let me, let me just address the noise portion of that, so we're gonna have to approach this from what is reasonable. So obviously, we want, we want to remove the blight from the township. You, you know, we are contracting with groups to come in, remove houses, you know, there's plenty of work that has to be done in, in order to make that safe to do. You know, if the township wants to say this can't happen before eight AM, then, you know, that's, that's something the township can look at, and, but as far as stopping progress completely, we're not gonna do that under a noise ordinance, because these are things we need to handle.
But what's, like I said, is, they tear down this one, and it wasn't supposed to be torn down, and they let that one stay, and I don't get it.
You know, anything about that, Steve?
Excuse me?
Mr. Wolf?
He was asking.
It's on Derby.
No. On Derby, do you have the address of that house?
No, it's Derby and Blairwood, that house is.
Oh, Derby and Blairwood, the big white one?
No, it's a brick house, it's a brick house.
Talking about the one on the corner?
On the corner?
Yeah, Utes was called out yesterday.
Yeah, oops, it was called out yesterday, so within forty-eight hours, this will be out, so they should be within a couple of weeks, based on them calling themselves. And that is, that's scheduled to be tore down, and also the old farmhouse at Derby and Kimmel.
Kimmel.
Happens when it comes down to. That's where you see the markings and all that stuff, but I, you know, the weather's been so cold too. But I got notice one day when they called themselves.
But these, uh, these tear downs are all being handled by land bank?
Uh-huh.
And so we have no control over those activities at all. Yeah, 'cause the land bank's their own government entity for Montgomery County. So they have their own rules and ordinances that they follow, and we have no control over them. But we can, we can share your concerns with them.
Yeah, the only problem is that one on Derby, they don't get to it soon. They might catch a kid and hurt a kid in there, 'cause they keep one breaking in that house.
We're aware of the problem, and we've tried to get it to the top of the list, per se. But again, it's government, federal government money tearing these down, and we're, we're little people. And the federal government does all this. We don't have money ourselves, it's a township to do it ourselves. Or we have, we can do it at noon, you know, we can say, "We're doing it at noon or one o'clock." But federal government decides what they wanna do and when they wanna do it.
And this is just, we wanna deal with nuisance type situations. We don't wanna stop the trash from being picked up constantly. And they start early and make noise.
That one is just, every time somebody they put a door up, somebody pulls, uh, the wood away from them, or they break the glass in them. Or there's trash all the way around them. And we know the kids are going in that house, having parties and some other things going there, but I'm just saying.
We, we've had problems with things all the way back from like when the bank takes ownership. Because the bank will take ownership and we'll, we'll catch kids in there, we'll catch people stripping copper out of the houses. And getting somebody on the phone or respond to a thief that has the authority to go anywhere with that charge and to, to file that complaint, to say, "I want a trespass, I want prosecuted," it's almost impossible. So what we end up is in a revolving door. We catch them, we pull them out, we call somebody, they board it up, they tear it up, they go back in, we call somebody, nobody commits. Uh, we drag them out, we call somebody, they board it back in, we just keep going. Um, and, you know, when the banks take ownership of these things, it's like, like they talked about earlier with the, the financing, you know, some, some project out west. There's, there's no connection here to the community. So they don't, they don't see what it's doing, they don't necessarily care what it's doing, and we just, we keep chasing our dad.
Yeah, but mainly I have to laugh because every time I turn around, I'm getting, you probably talking about who you wanna sell your house. They care then.
So there's money to be made more.
I got news for them, there's something in it they might not want to do.
Sell. Yeah.
Cold water. Be them.
Anything else for me?